I'd like to call this meeting of the town of Pine Top Lakeside Council to order. We do have a quorum. Joe will get ahold of Councilor Hastings on the phone. I would ask you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Diane?
If you'll please bow your heads with me. God, Holy One, Most High, we come to you this evening with hearts full of thanksgiving. We give you thanks for the many opportunities that have been afforded to our community this last month. I think of the wall that many people were able to go to, to heal and remember a war that was years ago but seems like yesterday. We give you thanks for our mayor and our city council members, for our city workers, and for our first responders. And we give you thanks for the many citizens in our cities that have worked together to make Pine Top and Lakeside the best cities in the state of Arizona. We ask that you would be with our mayor and our council members this next week as they meet for a strategic planning session. We ask that you would re-increase their time, that you would give them wisdom, discernment, and unity as they make decisions for the futures of our cities and those who reside within them. We ask that your presence would be here tonight, that we would be of one mind and an open heart. And we pray this with joy and thanksgiving. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Diane. Appreciate it. Item B is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in call to the public is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration later date. Items on the agenda are not heard during call to the public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. So you might be questioning my fashion choice tonight. Mayor Leach and I had a friendly wager on the Blue Ridge Sholo game a couple of weeks ago, and he was to wear our blue, our purple and gold jersey, and I was to wear their green and gold jersey, and Sholo won. Congratulations to the Cougars. We wish them well in their football game tomorrow night, the first of the playoff series. So we wish them well and hope that they're very successful and represent our region. And at this time, I'd also like to wish our Blue Ridge Varsity Soccer Team good luck tonight. They're playing Chino in Page, so we hope that they're, they do well in the playoffs. Tony Alva.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, Vice Mayor Smith, members of the council. As you know, the town of Pine Top Lakeside had the opportunity and the honor of hosting the Wall That Heals last week. The Wall That Heals is a three-quarter scale replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC. You may recall that we were to have hosted the wall last November, but the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund canceled the entire tour due to COVID. But we had our chance last week, and if I can set modesty aside, I think we hit it out of the park. The wall was open 24 hours a day for four days, once it opened last Wednesday afternoon. We had an estimated 5,500 visitors come see the wall last week, and that was very humbling. Tim Tates from the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund could not have been more complimentary about our community and our hosting efforts. There were so many people that played a role in making possible our successful hosting of this event, and I want to acknowledge a few groups this morning. First, our host committee. We had a committee of about 20 people. They worked for two years to plan and execute this event. Mayor Irwin, thanks to you. Mayor Irwin led our fundraising campaign. We set a goal of $25,000. Our budget was $30,000. We tried to raise 25. We ended up raising $28,500, plus another $5,000, and donated goods and services. So thank you for your leadership on that. All of our sponsors will be recognized in a newspaper ad tomorrow in the White Mountain Independent. I want to thank Keith Johnson. It was his idea to pursue one of the traveling walls, and he was so supportive over the last two years. So Keith, thank you. We had 300, more than 300 volunteers who helped us last week, from the escort to setting up the wall, to staffing the wall, 24 hours a day, once it opened. Our volunteers were phenomenal. I want to acknowledge Annie DeRozier. Annie had the Herculean task of recruiting, scheduling, and training those volunteers, and she did a phenomenal job. She's taken a couple of well-earned vacation weeks right now. Our Public Works and Parks team, along with support from Navajo County and the city of Sholo, Timber Mesa Fire, Pine Top Fire, and a number of volunteers, they helped put up the wall in record time. Normally, it's about a six-hour job. Our volunteers and our Public Works guys did it in 2 hours and 45 minutes. They also took down the wall in two and a half hours. That's usually about a three-and-a-half-hour job. So, so many people that, that share in the success of that. As I had the opportunity to watch the Patriot Guard riders escort the Wall That Heals to Mountain Meadow Park last week, it occurred to me that we were witnessing, witnessing something transformational. Our community, our state, and our nation are living through one of the most challenging and divisive times in our history. But last week, people of all walks of life gathered together in the spirit of unity to support our nation's heroes who fought valiantly for our country. There are 58,281 names inscribed on the wall, including 13 people from Apache County, 18 from Navajo County, and eight women, all of whom lost their lives in Vietnam. Last week gave people a chance to honor those who served our country during the Vietnam War era and offered an opportunity for healing for those who suffered through that time. My thanks to everyone who played a role. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. We appreciate everything that you did and all of our staff. And Keith, thanks for bringing this idea to the table. It was an incredible event. Item C is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion unless a member of council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered in their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. We have two items on our consent agenda tonight, as you can see. Have a motion? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Councilor Hastings, can you hear us?
Yes, and she said aye.
Okay. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or member of the public through the mayor at any time. We have one item this evening, item D1, Consider Resolution Number 21-1595, Approving the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission Maps to Keep Rural Arizona Together. Keith?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council, I've got, we have, you've heard the discussion regarding at our Apache County and Navajo County mayors and council members luncheon and meeting. And we've asked former Senator Sylvia Allen to come tonight and to present this to you. So rather than me read what we've got, she'll be more apt and able than I am. So I'd like to turn the time over to her.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Come on up.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Mayor and council members, to talk about redistricting. And as you know, we're right at the end of it now. And I know that my friend Jesse Bryant came to the Navajo and Apache City and Mayor's meeting, and he wasn't able to come tonight, which is too bad because he has just been really working hard on this. He asked me to help him, and so I'm here tonight to try to explain what, but we and other grassroots people started proposing, and you know, redistricting got off to a very slow start due to COVID and all the other things we have been dealing with. And it's just taken a while for everybody's minds to get on this and to really start thinking about it. And so we're going to, there's a PowerPoint here, and it's just with some, I don't have a clipper. Oh, good, that's gonna be great. This top one? Okay. This is just to remind, whoop, I'm doing something already. You better stay here, sir. Show me how to go back. Maybe I'll look at this one here. We're going, need to go back. One more, to the beginning. There we go. And then I just hit this one here. This side, okay. Excuse me very much while we figure out this. Okay, this is just to remind us that in our U.S. Constitution, it talks about that every 10 years, we've got to go through a recensus of the people, which then allows for us to redesign all the congressional districts. So that just shows that that's, and then also the state of Arizona Constitution provided for in 2000. And Jesse got these two slides, and I'm hesitant. So I'm going to read this one first because he got the two slides backward. Because this tells what's in our Arizona Constitution now because of redistricting that happened in 2000, where the people passed the redistricting law, where it was no longer done by the Arizona Legislature. So in our Arizona Constitution, it reminds us that when, when the commission goes to do the redistricting, the districts have to have equal population, districts shall be geographically compact and contiguous, district boundaries shall respect communities of interest, competitive districts should be favored, no significant detriment to the other goals, district lines shall use visible or geographical features. The number six is a federal law, the Voting Rights Act and Civil Rights Act, which also has to be looked at. See where I'm poking this? There we go. So here's a slide on the Arizona Independent Redistricting, passed by Proposition 106 in November 2000 election. And we are now in the third redistricting, and a new commission was seated, and they're now working on it. I want to remind you that the first legislative district that included our county, Navajo County, was the five rural eastern counties. And in 2000, when they did the first redistricting, especially the county supervisors, the five eastern counties supervisors got together, I remember this time very well, and they wanted very badly to, to be sure that we, we preserved the rural aspects of the state and that we had a rural legislative district. That was their goal. It was to be able to keep communities of interest. These communities, all of the, in District Five, were founded back in the 1870s and on. They all have so many things in common and in interest, but one of the biggest things we have in common is the natural resources. We have the forest, we have the copper quarter, we have farming, we have water, we have hunting and fishing, and of course, we're the recreation area for the valley. All these things are in common with these five eastern counties. And, and they also included ours, San Carlos and White Mountain reservations that did not at that, in 2000, include the Navajo or the Hopi Reservation, which was in District Two. So I just wanted to remind you how this has, has changed over the, the years. So the next slide is, in 2011, this is what, I worked in 2011. We started redistricting, working with all the different cities and different individuals. I was the senator at that time for District Five, and we wanted to keep our district basically together, to keep that rural district together that we felt was really important. And so that showed you the map that we tried to get adopted in 2011 to try to keep rural Arizona together. And then in 2011, this is what happened. They took the former District Five, they divided it between four districts. They took Gila County and divided it between three districts. They took Globe with Santan, Payson with Flagstaff. They put Sholo, Apache County with reservations, and Graham-Greenland Counties with Sierra Vista. So they took, they took District Five, and they totally just, totally blew it up, all right? And this is what we had, this is what we've had since then. So now we're up to speed for the 2021 redistricting. Jesse had called me, and this is like over a year ago, because we knew that redistricting was moving along really slow. And, but talked among a lot of people in, in different counties all over District Five, the old District Five area, to see if they wanted to try to bring back together a rural district again, a voice for rural Arizona, one where we could come together with the unique, our unique lifestyle. And when you mix the urban centers in with it, it, it just has really changed things these last 10 years. And we, and this is going to last for 10 years, so it's important we have a voice in this. And so the five eastern, and so this was the first map that Jesse had started going around and showing to people. And Jesse lives in Gila County, and he wanted his county back together. His county was split up three different ways, and it was very hard to work the, the different issues that you have in your county when you're having to hop all over with different legislators or, or, and, and, you know, Payson's in a whole different district than you are down here. And so that was what he first proposed. So, but let's, I want to go to this map here. Okay. This, I don't, Jesse said he did email a bunch of PAC materials to you, so you have this in front of you, correct? Very good. As you know, I don't know if you've seen what is the most recent map that the IRC is putting out. They're working on this map. Is, is this map also in your thing, in your packet? Okay. Right now, they have, we are still, when, when I'm writing the IRC and putting in my letters and what we're still encouraging, different cities and different councils and, and county people and chambers and everybody that we're talking to, we are asking to keep asking over and over that to try to put together a real rural legislative district. And so this map here is the one I want to talk about, because it's similar to what they're talking about. I mean, what they're, they're doing, but they have put, they have put us way up into Williams and part of West Sedona, then down on the end are, they've gone way into Pinell County, and they picked up the metro area. They picked up the area of Apache Junction. Gold Land, what's it called?
Gold Canyon.
Thank you very much. I wanted to say Gold Land Canyons. Gold Canyon, all the way down to Florence Junction, and there's a lot of subdivisions in there. You know, that area, the, of the, of the valley has just exploded, and there are numerous subdivisions now. It's very metro, very urban, and lots of boats will be down there. There's quite a few boats in that large area that, that will then compete for our interest up here in our rural areas. So we're disappointed over that. We're disappointed. Another thing that's disappointing is that South Apache has been pleading to be able to be put back with South Navajo and, and Sholo and Pine Top and Lakeside, where all communities of interest, and to try to be put back. So you see how we're respecting that the Native Americans still want to have their district. But what we're proposing is that they, when you look at this map, that this is how they do that, so that South Apache can be put in with our communities of interest and our rural issues that we are fighting for, the water, the forest, you know, recreation, hunting, all these things that we focus on up here in our communities. And, and so this map takes it on downward. We're still including Greenlee and Graham, and we want to include them too. Their, their issues are still very rural, and they're very compatible to our issues with farming and water and, and, and the copper. The copper is a big one. And so what this map is doing, instead of going clear up into Williams, it's just taking in the Cap Verde Rimrock area and then coming down and taking Superior, Hayden, Kearney, Wheatleman, Oracle, and then coming down and taking some of Wilcock and Benson. This keeps it very rural, still rural. And the reason why I had to expand so much, you know, through the census, instead of the districts being around 200,000, now they've got to be 233,000 approximately because of the growth. And so let me see what the next slide is. Do you have any questions on, and I don't know if you can see the difference between the new maps. So I'm thanking, thanking them very much for, for what they have done in trying to unite our communities. I wanted South Navajo County to be able to be back together, all together, and would have welcomed it. The White Mountain Apaches wanted to do that, but they, they're choosing not to, which this map respects that. And, but I think it's really important to help out South Apache County and to get those people united with us, and I think that this map allows for that to happen and still keep the integrity of what is now going to be District, Legislative District Six. They've switched us, so it's going to be confusing. So instead of us being six, we'll be seven, seven being six. And so, let's see, what's the next slide that he has here? Based on the IRC final map, the adjusted to reflect rural districts proposal. And so we, what has been asked of the different counties and cities is to pass a resolution, submit public comments, invite IRC public hearings, submit individual letters, help spread the word to media and citizens in your jurisdiction. And there's going to be a Zoom meeting, this, I think, hopefully it was emailed and in your packet. There's a Zoom meeting, a town hall, statewide town hall meeting this Saturday at 10:00 a.m., and this is your chance to participate and give your advocacy for keeping rural Arizona together with the five-plus eastern counties proposal. And I apologize, one thing I left home was all the cities that Sholo just passed a resolution. I wanted to list the different cities. I know Pima did, Globe, Miami. I wanted to read the list of cities who have been doing that in this, in this proposed district. But I know that the city of Sholo and also the county, Navajo County Supervisor's has requested hearing. I have not seen yet when our Navajo County hearing's going to be, but there will be one this month. They're hearing all through this month in November, and then in December, they will be doing the final vote of the maps. So this is the one they're proposing here, and they're still taking information, and they're still hearing for any changes, so changes could still be made up to November 30th, and then they'll do their final vote in December. So we still have time to express about putting ourselves back together as a rural legislative district for the, for the five eastern counties and plus, so.
Thank you. I think we had an email from Jesse earlier today giving us the list of those communities that have already, already done that. Isn't that the, did you guys all get that email?
Pima, Miami, Thatcher, and Sholo.
Yeah, yeah. So I know it's on a lot of people's agendas. Thank you. This was really good information. Does anybody have any questions?
I, I do.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
The, I'm still a little confused about the scale of these maps and where we actually end up. Pine Top, Lakeside, are we in, would we be in District Seven?
Yes, they have you now in District Seven, and, yes, in this map that they've come out saying this is the map now they're proposing, yes. South Navajo County, Winslow, Holbrook, and Pine Top, Lakeside, and Sholo are in District Seven now.
So the little squiggly line is the reservation line?
Yes, that is the reservation boundaries.
Okay.
Okay. And in this map here that we are trying to encourage them to keep working on to keep, you know, some of the changes we're asking for, this is all the reservation boundaries. And then how we're, if this map is connecting, it is going up the Apache Reservation on the west side of Forest Lakes, goes right up through there on the other side of, of the Meteor Crater, and hits the Hopi Reservation. So that's how that's connected on this map here. And this map here, they connect it by taking parts of Apache County, which is St. John's and then Alpine Nutriosa, that part that connects to Greenlee. They're taking that part to connect over here to the Apache Reservation. So this way would help our neighbors in Apache County be able to be united with us and, and still preserve what the White Mountain Apaches and San Carlos want to do. So we think that's a good, good compromise. So hopefully we could, you know, help the commission see that. Any further question?
Does that help, Vice Mayor? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I just wonder, will the same, we have different representatives. Well, we have representatives now for District Seven. We also have representatives from District Six. And are they going to like switch?
Well, obviously, they'll, they'll have to run in the district in which they live, so they will have to be running from Six instead of Seven, vice versa.
Right, okay. Yeah, all right. Thank you.
And this will all take effect with the election next year, so everybody will kind of be mixed up, and, and this is all over the state, so I don't think we're all.
All over the state, and as you see, I don't know if you saw, we, we haven't even got involved with the congressional map. I mean, this is so complicated, so much work, trying to get out and educate people to understand what's happening and all the ramifications. So this is the congressional map they're proposing, which I think, too, is hideous. It's certainly not geographically very common sense, but whatever. I have not gotten involved. Commenting on the congressional map is just too much, you know.
It's, it leaves us in an exceptionally large geographical district.
Well, how can any one person? Well, how can any one person possibly cover every issue and really feel like they know what their district is really needing them to do congressionally, but that's a whole nother thing, and you certainly should comment on it. I just want to encourage everybody to comment on whatever your opinion is, because this is our time. This is our time as citizens to get involved and do that, and let your voice be heard, and we'll see what happens. They have to get it done because all these candidates are waiting to figure out where they have to run, and so come January, it's going to be real interesting. See who all jumps in there.
So I personally commented on this at the very beginning of the process. It was very easy. You just go to the website and state your reasons for what you're thinking. So it's very easy to do. I'd encourage everybody to do that. Senator Allen, thank you very much for coming tonight. Nice to see you. We appreciate your work on this.
Oh, thank you.
I do think they are listening to a degree. I think it's better than the initial.
Yes.
So, anyway.
No, I'm very pleased. I appreciate this commission. I really want, and I tell them that every time I write, this is a very hard job for anybody to do and to get, to make anybody, everybody happy. It's impossible. But I really believe, following what they've been doing and their comments being made all the way through, they are trying to be fair. They're trying to follow those guidelines that I mentioned and to the best of their ability. So I think we're lucky there.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Mr. Eric Kramer would like to speak to this issue tonight.
Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the council, thank you very much. We've enjoyed a number of years where the council has been insulated from the previous constant culture wars. Has been able to concentrate on working for the issues that affect Pine Top, Lakeside, and I want to compliment you on that. If we go down this road with Sylvia Allen's proposed map, we will be back in the culture wars, culture wars all of the time. Drawing a district where Sylvia can win is quite a task. Wendy Rogers defeated Sylvia 60% to 40% in their last primary. The proposed district solves that problem by creating a gerrymandered district with a finger reaching out to put Wendy's home in a different district. This violates the Arizona Constitution and the statute setting up the Independent Redistricting Committee, Commission. The commission is specifically prohibited from looking after the interests of particular politicians. The defeat by Wendy shows that Sylvia underperforms as a candidate, partly because of her long-term commitment to defunding public schools and notorious statements like setting the age of the planet at 6,000 years. In an attempt to compensate for Sylvia's underperforming, the draft district proposes a 30% margin of victory for conservatives. This also violates the law and the mandate of the commission to create competitive districts. In fact, the proposal for two uncompetitive districts in northeast Arizona disenfranchises 321,000 people, either because the individuals are placed in a district where their votes aren't needed to win, or because they are in a district where they are predetermined to lose. The late David Peelman once said, "Jesus couldn't win in that district." I hope David and Jesus are discussing northeast Arizona redistricting now. It is important to note that the new proposed districts are much more unfair than the ones Mr. Peelman mentioned. These districts disenfranchise many residents of Pine Top, Lakeside. Pine Top, Lakeside should have solidarity with other municipal governments in northeast Arizona. Be aware that the proposed, the proposal devastates Flagstaff by dividing the metro area into two districts. This is clear evidence of the gerrymandering that the commission was created to avoid. Flagstaff and Coconino County have now drawn an excellent plan that has two districts. They are both competitive, they both meet with the provisions of law. I was intrigued when Pine Top, Lakeside restaurant and bar owners testified in Cholo recently about the importance of keeping the town in the same district as the White Mountain Apaches. They gave good reasons. I work to make sure our legislators are responsive to all of their constituents. Jasmine, Myron, and Jamassita are hardworking and incredibly dedicated to their district. Flipping over to Sylvia's district would not be an improvement in terms of constituent services. I don't think the people of Pine Top, Lakeside want all culture war all the time. Let's leave some space for good government. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Any, Counselor Krigbaum?
Excuse me, Eric, do you have a map that shows your concerns?
I will get you a copy of that Flagstaff map, if you like. I'll send it to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this issue? I would entertain a motion on this resolution then.
I can make a motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I move to approve Resolution 21-1595, urging the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission to keep rural Arizona together by considering and adopting the proposed base concept district maps as provided.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that? I will second that then. Counselor Hastings, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Did you have any questions or comments on this?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Counselor Hastings?
Aye.
Thank you. By a vote of four to one, that motion carries. There being no further business tonight, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.